All right, welcome, everybody. Good evening and welcome to the 2025 Yarmouth Town Meeting. For those of you who haven't had an opportunity to meet with, my name is Scott Leflem and I have the great pleasure of serving as Yarmouth's Town Manager. Tonight, we gather not only to conduct the important business of the town, but also to reaffirm and celebrate the spirit of community that defines Yarmouth. This annual meeting is one of the most powerful expressions of direct democracy, a tradition where every voice matters and every vote helps shape the future of our town. Town meeting is more than a legislative session. It's an opportunity for neighbors to engage in thoughtful deliberation, to weigh discussions that affect our schools, our infrastructure, our services, and our environment. In an era where many feel distant from the workings of government, evenings like tonight are a reminder that democracy begins here, close to home and close to the heart. This evening is also meant to -- is also a moment to recognize those who exemplify the very best of local leadership and civic spirit. We take time tonight to thank our outgoing elected officials for their years of dedicated service. As you'll learn more tonight, their commitment to Yarmouth has left a lasting -- will leave a lasting impact, and their efforts reflect the strength of the community -- strength of a community built on selfless volunteerism. In that same spirit, we are -- we're proud to honor this year's Lat String Award recipient, which you'll learn a bit more later in the agenda tonight, a citizen who went above and beyond the service for our town. The Lat String Award symbolizes Yarmouth's enduring welcome and the deep value we place on community stewardship. We thank this individual and his family for opening doors, extending hands, and strengthening the fabric of our town through quiet steadfast leadership. As we move through tonight's agenda, let's -- let us do so with respect, open minds, and a shared dedication for common good. Thank you for showing up, for speaking up, and for playing a part in the ongoing story of Yarmouth. And with that, we're going to get things started. So in just a moment, we're going to welcome Lisa Grant, our town clerk, up to the stage, and we're going to entertain motions for a moderator. We have a sharp-dressed man in the center of the table who is, I think, a willing participant, but all nominations are welcome. So with that, I'll welcome Lisa to the stage. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming to the Yarmouth Town Meeting. I'd like to open up with -- by asking for nominations for a moderator.
Oh! I would like to nominate Spencer Jones to be our nominator for this evening.
Are there any other nominations? I would -- I'd like to ask anyone wishing to cast a ballot, do so now for moderator. Has everyone that wishes to cast -- cast a ballot. By unanimous vote, Spencer Jones will be our moderator for tonight -- for this evening tonight.[229.79][229.79][applause]
No, I have to sign. I have to sign.
Do you, Spencer Jones, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States so long as I shall -- you shall continue, citizen thereof, to help you God? Do you swear that you will discharge to the best of your abilities the duties incumbent upon you as moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution and laws of states to help you God?
I surrender. Thank you. May we wish to consign this meeting...
Making things extra efficient. The town meeting is now in session. Welcome, everybody, to the 2025 Yarmouth Town Meeting. I want to cover a couple of things upfront. I think the first thing that I want to cover is that I'm very glad that you're all here. As Scott said, this is a very important part of what our community has been since 19 -- 1849, and it's very important that we do this every year. There have been over 200, maybe even 250 town meetings over the course of those years, and it's part of what makes us strong. The other thing I want to say is that I'm glad to be here. I grew up in Yarmouth, I love this town, and I want to be part of what's happening here. So, um, so welcome, and hopefully we'll be able to get out of here as quickly as possible. But I want to alert you to a couple of the things that will be happening while we're here. I'm the moderator, the person who's going to facilitate the meeting. My purpose is to make sure that the agenda, as has been communicated publicly, is addressed, and also to make sure that your voices are heard as we go through the different warrants that are here. When we get to the business part of the meeting, I'll be speaking very quickly and trying to read a lot of big numbers, so that if you have a comment that you would like to make at the relevant time, don't be shy about standing up and getting in front of the microphone and making sure that I know or that somebody on the dais also knows that you'd like to speak. The other thing I want to let you know is that the meeting will be run according to the rules of the main municipal association. They have a program that sets out the meetings that govern town meetings, and we will be following those. So before we get started, I want to echo what Scott said, that the town meeting is a great thing, and I'd like to add one point to that, and that is people around the world look to direct democracy as a beacon, as something that they aspire to, and we are very fortunate in Yarmouth that we can do that, that we have been doing that for so many years. So, again, I'm grateful that we're all here together. Great. So the first thing that I would like to do, before we get to the business part of the meeting, is that I would like to recognize Michael Wilber, who is the chairman of the school committee, so that he can recognize some outgoing school committee members. Mr. Wilber.
Thank you, Spencer. I didn't realize I was going to be first on the agenda tonight, so I'm maybe not quite prepared here. I want to start by thanking our two departing school committee members. And the first one that I want to speak about is Jess Garu. I promised to keep this shorter than our usual budget hearings, though. Jess, that's a pretty low bar. So we're here tonight to say thank you and farewell to someone whose dedication, leadership, and thoughtful perspective have helped guide our schools through six truly eventful years. Jess Garu. Jess has served on the school committee for these six years, including two as vice chair, and she's been an instrumental leader in our school's equity work. I'm not going to use those three letters. Now, let's be honest, serving on the school committee is not for the faint of heart. It's the kind of volunteer gig that comes with more emails than applause, more Hannaford conversations than high fives, and more public comment than anyone ever needs. And yet Jess showed up every time with purpose, poise, and real passion for the students and families of Yarmouth. She asked the thoughtful questions, she listened to parents, students, and educators, she brought a calm and caring voice to some very spirited conversations. Jess also has the ability to articulate her perspective, even when she knows that it may differ from other school committee members. Whether we were navigating a global pandemic, weighing budget challenges, or planning for the future of our curriculum, Jess always made sure the why behind our work remained clear, to create the best possible education for each and every student. And let's not forget, she did this while being a parent, a committee member, a theater director, the list goes on. She actually had a life. Someone she -- somehow she managed to do it all with kindness and a careful thoughtfulness that made the hardest discussions a little more human. Jess, your contributions have made a lasting impact, not just on the policies and plans, but on the culture of our school. You have helped share how we work together, you helped shape how we work together with respect, with empathy, and with our eyes always on our students. So on behalf of the committee, our schools, and the whole Yarmouth community, thank you. You have earned some well-deserved time off. Just know that if you ever miss us, there could always be a committee seat with your name on it. You don't have to sit in it now, but this is your chair.
Oh. Here it is, husband. Good evening. Believe it or not, I don't usually revel in the spotlight, but I couldn't pass up this opportunity to say thank you and to wish my next committee members going forward. So thank you to Dr. Doloff and all of the administrators. Thank you to the incredible district staff, the YEA president Todd Abbott and former president Rick Biskip. Thank you to my fellow committee members, Michael, Christine, Anne, Kelly, Sarah, and Tim, thank you for stepping up this year. Also, thank you to the previous members that I served with, including Kate Shub, Allison Hodgkins, Newell Auger, Jeremy Fisher, Laura Carroy, and of course, to David Ray and Philip Jones. Oh, and I guess I should thank Anne Fleming twice. I have been continually inspired by your commitment, your honesty, and your trust in the process, even when the path wasn't always easy. During my tenure, we've weathered enormous changes together, none greater perhaps than the COVID-19 pandemic. Two meetings a month, I was told, which suddenly became endless Zoom calls and researching topics that I never really considered before. Masks, six feet apart, synchronous versus asynchronous learning for kindergarten, what to do? Supporting our staff and students and family through that time required compassion, resilience, and a willingness to try new things on a whim. I saw our community rise to the occasion, not just to maintain education, but to care for one another in real tangible ways. We are a stronger district for what we learned during that time, and we can take that forward. You may recall, just prior to the pandemic, the same time you all voted me in for the first time, the town also approved the construction and renovation of all four of our schools. That level of investment, both in our facilities and the future, is a testament to Yarmouth's values. These projects weren't just about brick and mortar, they were about ensuring our students have spaces where they can thrive, feel safe, and supported. They are about honoring the professionalism and creativity of our educators, but mostly they were about providing a foundation strong enough to meet the growth that is happening in this district. And yes, we have had our share of hard conversations, and I know you have many more to come. I encourage the incoming members and the veterans alike to continue the tradition of civil thoughtful dialogue as you face politically charged and emotionally complex issues. I encourage you to have the strength and conviction to change your mind. When you learn new facts or when you begin to see the world through another's eyes, I challenge you to think about the views that may not align with what you were brought up thinking. I urge you not only to understand those with whom you might not agree, but to stand up for them. This is how we will find balance in a world of discourse. In my time in Yarmouth, I have been grateful for the way Yarmouth shows up, with respect, with curiosity, and with an understanding that public education exists to serve all children. It is my hope that we will continue to build on that spirit, that we will keep listening to each other. Balance is not about getting everything we want, but about making space for everyone to be seen, heard, and supported. So thank you again, Yarmouth, for the honor of serving you.
As many of you know, David Ray served for many years on the school committee, and last fall, he told us he would not be able to continue on on the school committee. You'll hear more about him in just a bit. But that left a huge hole. David was an exceptional leader, and he brought a breadth of knowledge and experience that could not be replaced. So when Tim Wheaton answered the call to serve in David's seat, I think we all breathed a sigh of relief, and then immediately started wondering how we could convince him to stay a little bit longer. Tim, you've become the school committee's version of a superhero. Every time we need saving, you show up. In all seriousness, tonight we say thank you to someone whose dedication to our schools and our community has truly made a lasting impact. Tim has served a combined 13-plus years on the school committee, including three as chair and four as vice chair. He served on the strategic planning committee, and just when he thought he was safe, he agreed to return. Tim, your commitment to Yarmouth students, families, and educators has been unwavering. You've led with vision, integrity, and a genuine passion for public education. Whether you are guiding us through challenging decisions, reminding us of the long-term spending consequences of our actions, or providing important historical context for our work, you did so with thoughtfulness and respect for every voice at the table. Your leadership has shaped the direction of our schools over the years and has inspired all of us to aim higher. You've been a steady hand in times of change and a champion for what's best for our children and our town. Even when your official term ended, you answered the call to return, proving once again that you just can't say no to Yarmouth. Tim, you seem to hold much of our school's history in your head, and I appreciate your willingness to share it with us for the umpteenth time. So on behalf of the entire school committee, our students, and the families of Yarmouth, thank you, Tim, for your years of service, your wisdom, and your heart. We wish you all the best in your next chapter, and don't worry, we'll try not to call you too often. Thank you to Tim.[1000.13][1000.13][applause] Now fortunately, I don't have to say anything about Randy.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Wilber. So we're very fortunate tonight to have a man who is very respected in the town and has earned our love and devotion over many years. To introduce the next outgoing school committee member, Nat Tupper.[1029.23][1029.23][applause]
I am not the next outgoing school committee member.[1043.16][1043.16][laughing] But Mr. Randall Bates is the next member of the town council to finish, and he's finishing his fourth term on the town council, as well as other service to the community. So he's termed out for now, and I don't know if he'll come back or not. I'm sure if you asked him today, he'd say no way, but I can tell you, a year away makes you long for it all. So Randy, I was -- I was surprised when you asked me to speak about you tonight, as you complete your fourth term on the council. And you even suggested that you had confidence I could be both brief and appropriate.[1081.01][1081.01][laughing] Huh? Brief and appropriate are not generally hallmarks of my speaking moments in front of the town council. And you do know that I've skipped the last 192 meetings of the council, and so I've been quiet for quite some time. The pressure to build -- the buildup to speak is immense. I don't know why you were thinking. I have observed that we all approve of your new big boy haircut. We like it.[1118.23][1118.23][laughing][1120.23][1120.23][applause] But I think you should check the fit, because it clearly is affecting your judgment.[1129.66][1129.66][laughing] Randy, I absolutely think the world of you, and so, brief and appropriate, I made a try. Just a try. In my 43-year career, I had the privilege and educational benefit of working with and for lots and lots of municipal officials across the entire spectrum of viewpoints and skills, commitments, motives, and personalities. These people include most of the good citizens seated up on the stage, along with Randall Bates, and others that I expect are probably in the attendance tonight, but I can't see them because of the lighting. What strikes me that makes Randy so special is that he is able to absorb and contain within himself the full range of all of those perspectives and personalities, values and commitments. He's able to take in and take on all of the conflicting issues, priorities, ideas, and strategies. He wrestles with it all quite forthrightly and usually effectively, while holding fast both to his personal integrity and the community's interests. It is not easy for Randy, nor anyone else, to lead and pick the best public path forward when he can see and empathize with not both sides, but all the varied sides and angles. Choosing between right and wrong, good or bad, is easy, or at least it should be. But being forced to choose and prioritize between two or more competing goods, or two or more competing values and rights, that can be torturous, especially for people who are wired for empathy. And anyone who has ever served in public office, whether in elected or appointed roles, has agonized with many decisions and choices, and they know that all too often they are going to be punished for their struggling. So be it. At least so far in my life, I have never needed to retain a criminal defense attorney,[1279.16][1279.16][laughing] and I hope I never will. But if it should ever come to pass, I probably would not hire Randall Bates.[1290.16][1290.16][laughing] I wouldn't, because it's all too likely that if I was in trouble, he was going to be a co-defendant.[1300.51][1300.51][laughing] But I would try to find somebody as much like him as I could, because I suspect the same traits that make him such an excellent town councillor also make him such an accomplished defense attorney. Randy listens with empathy and compassion, with creative problem-solving, with more kindness than judgment, and he looks with an eye for the long-term best results for everyone. He cares, and he shares. So whether you're a client, a friend, or constituent, one is very lucky to have Randy Bates looking out for you. So I want to commend to you the example of Mr. Bates and his innate aptitude that makes him the trusted, beloved, and successful community leader that he is and has been for Yarmouth. For 12 years, Randy's not-so-secret sauce is his mixture of humanity, humility, and humor, each reinforcing the other. Randy's concern for others and his willingness, more than his willingness, his eagerness to be helpful, to find common ground, to protect and nourish good relationships, and to make room in every conversation and decision for each person arises out of his humility. His friendships, mutually trusting connections, and both his wisdom and vision are grounded in humor and compassion. Humility allows him to both laugh at himself and to ask for help. He truly represents the people of Yarmouth. He represents the best of us. He represents the best in us. Our wonderful town has been so blessed by the service, presence, and leadership of Randy Bates. I ask you to join me in expressing our shared appreciation to my friend Randy and to all of our counselors and school committee members and fantastic staff for all of their gifts of caring. Thank you all for a job well done and a community well-served. I was going to make fun of Nat in my whole remarks. I'm not going to do that now.[1466.66][1466.66][laughing] He has kind of left me speechless. I'm really unsure of who you were talking to, but he sounded like a good guy or talking about.[1476.01][1476.01][laughing] Thank you, Nat. I know I leave this town -- I'm not leaving this town, who am I kidding?[1486.16][1486.16][laughing] I'll probably be back in a year.[1489.51][1489.51][laughing] But I know that I leave us in good hands with these wonderful people here, all my good friends on the council, and those folks down at the end.[1504.01][1504.01][laughing] I know what a terrific town this is, and it has been a pleasure to serve. It's -- I was thinking earlier that -- it's been 14 years, because I took a couple of years off, and I looked at all of our department heads. And by the way, if you don't know them, get to know them, they're unbelievable. The work that they do is phenomenal, it's professional, it's efficient, and it's done with a good nature, and I have been able to take credit for all of their work for the past 12 years.[1548.16][1548.16][laughing] It is interesting that of all the department -- there were two -- there are now two new departments since I started, and there are two people who are department heads who predate me. I thought that was -- that was interesting. Just a quick trivia in your head, think about it? Yeah, it's Eric Street and Heidi Grimm, who've been here forever. But thank you, department heads, you guys are amazing, and you make us look very, very good. I can't end, and I'm -- I just -- I want to thank my family. Isabel is now a New Hampshire voter, I don't know what got into her.[1593.21][1593.21][laughing] But she's there. Wyatt, Randall is here with us today, and thank you Wyatt and to Isabel for allowing me to miss some things when I had to go to budget hearings, because I really wanted to go to those instead of your meetings.[1611.16][1611.16][laughing] And let me just end with saying thank you to Dara. I could not have done this or pretty much anything without you, so thank you. Good citizens of Yarmouth, you are in very good hands, and it has been a privilege and an honor of a lifetime.
Thank you, Jessica, thank you, Tim, thank you, Randy, for your service. Just as we recognize those people that serve in the school committee and the town council, the town of Yarmouth also recognizes citizens who, in more direct ways, or without the need of those councils, to serve the town of Yarmouth. And we award the Lat String Award each year to a person who is worthy of our respect and recognition. And before we get to announcing this year's awardee, I wanted to ask if there are any prior Lat String recipients here in the audience, and if you would stand up so that your community can see you.[1701.01][1701.01][applause] All right. There we go.[1705.11][1705.11][applause] Thank you very much.[1707.11][1707.11][applause] You've been awarded because of the things you've done for Yarmouth, and we as a community are grateful for what you've done. Now, moving on to the topic of the awardee for this year, we have a person to make the announcement who you've already heard about, Tim Wheaton, and I can't think of a better person to speak to this year's award. So Tim, if you would.
Good evening. Since 1980, the town council has annually recognized citizens of Yarmouth who have contributed their time, efforts, and concern for an extended and exemplary period for the benefit of the citizens of Yarmouth. The Lat String Award, with its name derived from the town motto, "Our Lat String Always Out," is intended as an acknowledgement of those citizens whose examples of citizenship and leadership keep Yarmouth a warm and welcoming community of caring individuals. Tonight, we add a name to a list of extraordinary Tonight, we add a name to a list of extraordinary citizens. It's both heartbreaking and an honor to present this most prestigious award posthumously to David Paul Ray, who truly was a gift to our community. The council could not have chosen a more deserving person. Tonight, before us, we have Kay Ray and her sister, David's sister, Joanne, brother, Ken, and sister-in-law, Julie, and two nieces, and you'll hear from Kay in a bit. Public service is a team effort, and we are very grateful that Kay and daughter, Cirilla, shared Davis, David with us for so long. For the last quarter-century, David dedicated himself to the Yarmouth community. He was a selfless and generous public servant. He often called it "a labor of love." In his remarks at David's celebration of life, which was incredibly well-attended and so moving, Superintendent Dolof described him as "one of the kindest and most knowledgeable human beings with whom he had had the pleasure to interact." We all know David was a true gentleman, always poised and professional, prepared and thoughtful, warm and welcoming, a good listener, and wanted everyone to be heard. He was respected and a man of great integrity. He brought out the best in others. What's more, David was at the center of some of the most consequential issues facing the schools and our community. He began his public service to Yarmouth as a vital member of a building committee in the late 1990s, brought about by the aging Yarmouth High School and Row School. During this important period, David generously volunteered his expert skills as a construction lawyer, an accomplished construction lawyer, meeting two to three times a month. He also was instrumental in rallying community support for this effort, which faced strong political headwinds, as the tax base at that time shifted from the Wyman Power Plant to residents. He and others were responsible for the new Row School, the complete renovation of Yarmouth High School, including this new theater and a new library at YES. At that time, the YHS, the high school project alone, was considered one of the most complex renovations ever undertaken in Maine. In 2002, David was elected to the school committee as a write-in candidate, and was re-elected in 2005. During his first two terms, he was at the center of some extraordinary events, like confronting the expected impacts of the so-called Polesky Tax Cap, which would have resulted in the loss of at least a third of our staff. Just two years later, we faced the Tabor Referendum, the Tax Bill, Taxpayer's Bill of Rights referendum, which also would have significantly resulted in the law, reduced the educational experience in Yarmouth. He again approached the challenge with calm and reason. We had been having some conversations with area school districts about sharing some non-instructional services. But then 2007 began with the unthinkable, a full court press by Augusta on school consolidation, which would have disbanded the Yarmouth School Department and its school committee, with our schools being merged into a Greater Portland Super District of 12 municipalities and over 20,000 students. Everything that had been built by Frank Harrison and beyond would have gone. After several months of lobbying and analysis, David was instrumental in helping us chart our course forward. We had options: merge with Falmouth and SAD 51, merge with Freeport and Pownall, or remain a standalone school district as a result of our special exemption as a high-performing, high-efficient district, only four in the state. When Superintendent Murphy retired in 2009, I recruited David to return, to lend his steady hand on the tiller during the transition to new leadership, which sadly turned into a very challenging period for David and the schools. David was re-elected for his fourth term in 2012, which included the hiring, the hiring of Superintendent Dolof in 2014. Through it all, David was always a powerful advocate for education and for all students. Whether the issues were routine or challenging, David's views were always well-considered and given the extra weight they deserved. He was a strong advocate of the Yarmouth schools not only being an excellent school system by main standards, but by our new aspirational goal at that time, to be regarded as one of the best school systems in New England. Among many areas of school improvement, David championed the expansion of the then-Governor-King's Laptop Initiative, which was limited to 7th and 8th grade. With David's strong support, laptops were provided to these HMS students as they moved into Yarmouth High School to provide a full 7th through 12th laptop program, which was unique at that time. Upon David's second retirement from the school committee in 2015, Senator King thanked David for his exceptional service to Yarmouth and support of that initiative in particular. Now, time does not allow me to cover most of the school improvement work he supported, but please know that he always kept an eye on the financial implications, too. He often underscored the importance of being fair to the schools and being fair to the taxpayers. But even after more than 15 years of extraordinary service, David wasn't done. As school enrollment grew and the need for expanded facilities became compelling, I recruited David to join the new facilities committee in 2017, which grew into large, complex projects of all of the four schools. As Superintendent Dolof noted, once again, David's knowledge and expertise, but even more than that, his calm, unflappable nature, allowed us to complete these projects on time, within budget constraints, and with clear direction for resolving any conflict we had had the construction teams, even amid the turmoil of a global pandemic. And then, he was elected to the school committee for unprecedented fifth term in 2022, which he tragically could not complete. In total, he was chosen as chair for eight of those years, which speaks volumes about the confidence that his colleagues always had in him. It's worth noting his leadership contributions to the Yarmouth Historical Society, as well as the Royal River Community Players. David Ray has made a profound impact on the town of Yarmouth time and time again, over a nearly, over nearly a quarter-century, with perhaps how he conducted himself being even more impressive than his countless accomplishments. Again, as Superintendent, Superintendent has noted, not only are we better for having known him, this community is better for having had him live here, and he will long be remembered and respected as one of the most influential contributors our schools have ever known. David Ray was a gift to our community. As Rick Biscuit, veteran teacher and longtime president of the Yarmouth Teachers Association, once told me, "If there was a Yarmouth Mount Rushmore, David would be on it." His beloved daughter, Cirilla, is a 2015 Yarmouth High School graduate. David was chosen to deliver the convocation address for that graduation, and he was awarded an honorary, honorary degree, making him her classmate. David's name shall be added to an engraved plaque on display at the town hall and on the granite monument at Latch String Park. Our hearts remain very heavy, but please join me in celebrating David Ray posthumously as the Latch String recipient, with the award giving to his loving wife, Kay Loftus Ray, who so generously shared David with us for so long. Thank you.
I appreciate all those kind words. So this is going to be brief. David was the speaker in our house, but on behalf of David's entire family, we would like to thank the town council for this award. His family and I are very proud, and David would be so honored. He loved his work on school committee, especially when it was contentious and complicated, because that's when he really dug in and did his historical research and talked to people on both sides of the argument. He really did go above and beyond to figure something out and then present it in a way that everybody could make up their own mind about it. And I think that the Yarmouth community appreciated that, or some of the members of the committee, I mean, the town obviously did, and, and I really did. I mean, he, he did that for me constantly, like boil something complicated down and just make it easy. I'm not gonna last up here very long, but David was great, and I appreciate everything he did for the town and for us. Thank you.
I'm certainly glad to live in a town where we can celebrate the people who help us and who contribute to our community, and I hope you feel that way, too. There are some other things I'd like to celebrate while we're here. We've talked about people that are leaving the council and the committee. We're talking about people who have been awarded things for what they've done in the past. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the people that are serving us right now. And we are very fortunate to have with us the host of an award-winning video series, Scott's Friday Five, to help introduce the town council and the staff that is present.
Thanks, Jay. This may make an appearance on this week's edition, so be sure to, be sure to take a look. Anyways, as has been said a few times, I am relatively new to this position, but have been supported in so many ways by the members of the, of the town council, and certainly members of the staff. So this is an opportunity to recognize the folks who put in countless hours to the betterment of Yarmouth, and certainly the folks that I get to work with every day, really leaning in to do the hard work and, and really caring about this community. So to my right, Randy Bates, who's our, our current chair, who, as was noted, is finishing his 256th year on the council, and we may see him in another year, I sure hope so. Next to him, Karen Orenstein, who served as our vice-chair over the last calendar, the last municipal term. She's finishing her second year on the town council. Megan Casey, who's finishing her fifth year on the council. Michelle Cromerdy, who's finishing her fifth year on the council. David Craig, who's at like 264 years on the council, but is, is finishing his 10th year. Heather Abbott is just finishing, I think it's technically four and a half years, but will round up, on the town council. And Zoe Wolf, who is finishing her first term and will be up for reelection next Tuesday. And I would not, I'd be missing an opportunity to embarrass folks in the back corner if I didn't recognize folks who, who I work, have the pleasure of working with every day. Here, President Lisa Grant, as we met, met previously, who serves as our town clerk. Ruth Bennett, who's hiding in the corner, who is probably the, the first face that many of you see at town hall, and the friendliest face in town hall. She is our deputy election clerk and also does everything else at the front counter. Olivia Strobel, who is also hiding in the corner, works at our police department as our administrative assistant. She also helps with our elections. Don Madden, our finance director. Jessica Factor, who serves as our human resources director. Steve Johnson, who's wearing a tie tonight, serves as our town engineer. He's also my second-in-command and a huge help on a daily basis. Dan Gallant, our police chief. Aaron Swirko, who serves as our planning and development director. Tori Hill, who serves as our director of community and economic development. Tim Ferriss, in plainclothes, incognito, who serves as our police captain. Nick Trimbley, who's dressed up for the occasion, serves as our code enforcement officer. Karen McNeil, who does just about everything, but has the title of Yarmouth Community Services Director. Heidi Grimm, long-timer, as has been previously mentioned, serves as our library director. Mike Robitaille, our, our excellent fire chief. I wanted to give special credit to Sean Quirk and Sarah McDonald, who are sitting in the back and pulled all of this together. They together make Yarmouth Municipal Television a thing and make it so that all of our, our public meetings are available for viewing on the web and on-demand. So thank you for them. And Will Owen, I think I saw him sneak in. Oh, Eric Street, of course, and I'm, I'm, I will forget somebody, I promise you, but is that Christie? Hayashida, who, who does our general assistance. Just an unbelievable team, and again, it really is a pleasure to work with them and, and to experience our day-to-day together. It's such a strong team, and we do such great work for the, they, they do such great work for the community, and we, I appreciate their work. So thank you.
Would you stand with the staff, please, stand? Wow, I guess they won't. All right. Well, now, to introduce the, the school committee members, we, we don't have a video star, but we have somebody who is very well-known around town and really needs no introduction. Dr. Dolof, would you do the honors?
Thank you. Yes, good evening. Thank you for being here. I'd like to introduce the members of this year's school committee. Thank them for their service to the schools and to the community. To my left is Michael Wilbur, you've heard from him, our chairperson, finishing up his fifth year. Christina Patrick, our vice-chair, finishing up her second year. Anne Fleming, finishing up her seventh year. Sarah Oliveras and Kelly Hall, both in their first year. Jess Garu, finishing up her sixth year, and Tim Wheaton, finishing up his 13th year. There are a lot of school staff members here this evening. I will only name two of our central office staff members who are seated down front, as they were instructed to do by their teacher. Zach Harding, our director of business operations. Shawna Crofton, our director of teaching and learning, and many other school staff members here this evening. Thank you for being here, appreciate your service. Let's get on with the business.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're to the business part of the meeting. I want to remind everyone how we'll be voting tonight. For all of the warrants that we have, except for one, you'll be voting using a card that you have in your hand, and when the moment comes, I will say all those in favor, and those in favor will raise their card, and you'll hold it up in the air until the town clerk is able to get a sense of what the vote is, and then you'll put it down. In the case of Article 16, we will be having a written vote, in which case you will be invited to fill out a piece of paper, which will be right down here in front of the dais, and the town clerk will be there to assist you with that. So, here we go. So, here we go. I will read the warrants, and there are some motions that have been talked about that will be offered, and you will be able to vote on those motions. Article 2. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for regular instruction, the school committee and the town council recommend $19,139,310. Councilor Bates, do you have a motion?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to authorize $19,139,310 for regular instruction.
Thank you very much, Councilor Bates. Are there any town folk that would like to discuss this item?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Good point.
Seconded.
Sorry, I thought they were going to jump in. All right, thank you for the second. Great. Is there any discussion from the town? Seeing none, would all those in favor, please raise their card. Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your card now. The ayes have it. Article 3. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for special education, the school committee and the town council recommend $7,405,44. Councilor Orenstein, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to authorize $7,401,554 for special education.
Second.
Thank you for the second. Do we have any discussion from the town? Would all those in favor, please raise their hand. Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise, thank you. All right, the ayes have it. The article passes. Article 4 has been reserved and been reapportioned to subsequent articles in here, so I will move right to Article 5. Article 5. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for other instruction, the school committee and the town council recommend $1,532,921. Councilor Abbott, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to authorize $1,532,921 for other instruction.
Great. Do I have a second? I hear a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion from the people of the town? Seeing none, would all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your hand now. Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Article 6. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for student and staff support, the school committee and the town council recommend $3,885,166. Councilor Cromerdy, do you have a motion?
I do. Thank you. I move that the town vote to authorize $3,885,166 for student and staff support.
Thank, and I hear a second. Thank you very much. Is there discussion from the town people? Seeing none, would all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Article 7. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for system administration, the school committee and the town council recommend $1,104,2. Councilor Craig, do you have a motion?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize $1,104,2 for system administration.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. People of Yarmouth, do you have any discussion? Seeing none, would all those in favor, raise their hand, please. Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you. The ayes have it. Article 8. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for school administration, the school committee and the town council recommend $1,837,473. Councilor Wolf, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. I move that the town vote to authorize $1,837,473 for school administration.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Townfolk of Yarmouth, what say you? Hearing no discussion, would all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you. The ayes have it for Article 8. Article 9. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for transportation and buses, the school committee and the town council recommend $1,268,126. Councilor Casey, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the town vote to authorize $1,268,126 for transportation and buses.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Is there discussion from the town? Hearing none, would all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your hand now. There we are. Thank you. The ayes have it for Article 9. Article 10. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for facilities maintenance, the school committee and town council recommend $3,550,736. Councilor Bates, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that the town vote to authorize $3,550,736 for facilities maintenance.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there discussion from the town on this article? Hearing none, would all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Article 10 passes. Article 11. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for debt service and other commitments, the school committee and the town council recommend $2,467,722. Councilor Orenstein, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move that the town vote to authorize $2,467,722 for debt service and other commitments.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there discussion from the town on this article? Seeing none, would all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your hand now. Thank you. The ayes have it. Article 11 passes. Article 12. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for all other expenditures, this article includes the school department's portion of the food nutrition service program. The school committee and the town council recommend $65,000. Councilor Abbott, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to authorize $65,000 for all other expenditures.
Thank you, Councilor Abbott. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion from anyone in the town? Seeing none, would all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Are all those opposed? Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Article 12 passes. Article 13. To see what sum the town will authorize the school committee to expend for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, from the town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes, Title 20-A, Section 15690, unexpended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. The town council and school committee recommend $42,248,050. Councilor Cromerdy, do you have a motion?
I do. Thank you. I move that the town vote to approve Article 13 as written.
Second.
Thank you very much for the second. Is there any discussion of this article from the town?
What kind of discussion can you have?
Thank you. So before we start, I would like to ask what your name is and where you live in Yarmouth. That's, oh yeah, if you could speak, if you could speak to the microphone so people could hear you, it'd be great.
Hi, my name's Lonnie Darling. I live on Cousins Island, and I was just wondering what kind of discussion we could have.
Thank you for that, and thank you for asking the question. As I said earlier, I think this is a venue where we should be able to ask questions. I think, so the question of what can we discuss now? When we think of where we are right now, there's already been substantial work on the budget, all items, by committees in the town, and then, in the case of the school, with the school committee, and then the town council. So there has been a discussion that has been ongoing for a significant period of time. So that's the first thing that I would say in answer to your question. As a matter of how the town meeting works, the real purpose here is for the town people to decide whether or not to approve the articles based on the recommendations from the town council and from the school committee. So that if there are specific questions about an item within the budget that were not addressed during that prior period, this would be a venue to do that. So that's the answer to the question, is those are the kinds of things that can be discussed here. And would, do you have anything to add to that?
I'd only mention, it may be, it may be helpful to have this one maybe translated for folks, because there's a lot of words there, and maybe Dr. Doloff has an opportunity to sort of explain what this means and what the impact might be for local folks.
I'm just curious, you know, as far as I know, we're based $25 per thousand is what our houses are estimated at, and will this new budget, which is more than last year's, increase that 25? And I might be wrong by the 25.
Thank you. So let me make sure I understand the question correctly. So you're asking whether or not this budget will result in an increase in your property tax bill?
Correct.
That's great. Great. Mr. LaFlemme, would you like to answer that question?
Sure. Happy to. Good, thank you for the question. Yep. So this was a bit of a complicated question this year, because we're in the sort of wrapping up a statistical revaluation of property, which again, sort of reapportions what those values are for every parcel and every resident in, residents in Yarmouth. And so that mill rate, that $25 mill rate that you referenced, is based on the existing value base. We're anticipating that base to go up pretty significantly, based on the market. Our current assessed value, which is, sort of compares Yarmouth's property values versus the market, is at about 53%. So about half of what the actual, what the market says the value of property is in Yarmouth. So we're finishing that process. With the adjustments in expenditures and the adjustments in revenues, the blended total and blended tax increase year over year would be 6.6%. However, with the statistical revaluation, you're getting a lot more money into the total value base. That pie is much bigger to pay for these expenditures. So we're anticipating the mill rate to be at $15.92. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Well, if you could just put a number, you know?
Sure.
If it's going to go up from 25 to 28, or...
So it's going to go from 25, 25, if everything is approved as is, it would go from $25.67 per thousand to $15.92 per thousand. So it'd be a 38% decrease in the overall mill rate. However, how each individual parcel is going to be taxed and the value of each property may be adjusted. So the sort of the rough math is about 30% of property will see an increase in their property tax bill, about 30% will see a decrease in their property tax bill, and about 30% will see, won't really see any appreciable difference either way. But it's going to really depend on the parcel. So it's not really, you know, sometimes you do like what the increase would be on a $500,000 house. It's tough to say that this year, because each property is going to be assessed differently.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Does that answer the question for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great. Thank you for asking that. Is there, are there any other questions about this?
Hi.
Awesome.
My name is Diane Nichols. I live in McCurnee Village, too. Following up on his question, I have a real concern, because you're doing a statistical reevaluation. We are voting on a, next week, on a budget where we don't know the impact of our taxes. It seems to me, after living here 23 years, this school budget passes overwhelmingly every year, two to one, at least. This year is the first time you've done a statistical reevaluation. I don't see the reason why you couldn't have put in the contract with Vision Government Solutions that we would have knowledge of this tax increase and have our new property tax assessments before this vote next week. Because you're only taking a subset of sales for a two-year period, so you're not looking at the entire town. You're taking a subset of sales from April 1st, '23, to April 1st, '25. So I don't know what the numbers are, but they're far less than the overall when you did a regular reevaluation in 2016. How do we vote on this budget when we don't know the impact to our taxes now? And it appears to me, after 23 years of living here, this is a standard operating procedure. So in 2016, same thing. 2002, when you did another reassessment, it was the same thing. I don't understand why there's not more transparency here. Because we don't have all the information to vote next week. Because you're saying a third of our taxes will go up, a third will stay the same, a third will go down. You don't know that, because COVID has put a twist in all of the market sales. So the market isn't what it was in years past. It's totally inflated here and everywhere else in the country. So I'm living in a house that I paid over $500,000 for. The sales on my street are over $1 million in the last two years. So my taxes, the assessed value, is going to go up tremendously. And even if you cut the mill rate down to $15.92, I'm still going to be looking at an increase, because my tax, my assessed value is under $500,000 now. So my question and my concern is, how do you expect us to vote when we don't have all the facts?
Thank you very much for your question. So I, I'm going to ask if there is anyone on the dais who would like to respond to that question. They are not under an obligation to do so, according to the rules of the meeting. So is there anyone here who has anything they'd like to say about that?
I'm happy to, Diane. Good to hear from you. It's sort of, it's a, it's an imperfect system. So we, we contract our regional assessing work with Cumberland County Regional Assessing. They then sort of subcontracted out the individual, individual parcel analysis to Vision Government Solutions. Part of the reason why we don't have those totals ready right now is because we need, there is, April 1st is the state deadline to set new values. And so there's a lot of work, even though it's not a full, full revaluation, it's more of a tabletop exercise. Those values need to be set in order for them to do their, their full analysis, which means that it's an awful lot of parcels and an awful lot of analysis that needs to happen between then and now. And so while we are working with them to try to get that information out to folks as quickly as possible, it just, it is not available yet. And it again...
I'm sorry, you have to speak into the microphone if you want to ask a question, and you should ask it to me, the moderator.
Then can the vote be postponed till we have that information? Because I'm assuming it'll come out in July.
So the question is, you were wondering why it wasn't postponed until after...
The June 10th vote, why can't it be postponed until we have that information?
Would you like to answer that?
Sure. Happy to. Yeah, so our fiscal year is, ends in June, on June 30th. And so those, those values should be mailed out to every property owner within the next week. But again, we...
But it's after the fact.
I totally agree with that. And it's, again, it's an imperfect system, but it is what we're dealing with right now.
But you see, we're having increases year after year. I mean, we've had, in the last four years, up to, you know, 27 to 33%. I mean, these are huge increases. These are not sustainable for people to be paying these kind of property taxes. And 70% of this budget is a school, so I think we do have a right to know what our assessed values are going to change to prior to taking, having the vote on June 10th.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Are there any other voters of Yarmouth that would like to comment or discuss this issue? Oh, we do. Good.
Yes, might as well. Bill Harkey, Ledge Road. So I've been through a few reevaluations, but I just want to touch on a couple of things you guys said, just so everybody understands, right? You mentioned the taxes are going up like six point something percent, but the sheet says 7.56, right? Budget increase. So there's obviously some income, right, that's, that's coming up. So income's coming up, expenses are going up. So we call it 7%. So if we weren't having a revaluation, everybody's taxes go up 7%, right? When we have a revaluation, and this is just for folks who don't understand the process, right? If your house was $500,000 and you were paying $10,000 in tax, or $500,000 and you were paying $10,000 in taxes, your house could be valued at $1 million, you're going to pay $10,000 plus whatever the tax rate increase is, right? So it's, the expenses are the expenses. So just to help anybody that's thinking that. I completely agree with the last speaker. It is unfortunate that there's, you know, a four-day overlap, and people can't plan for this. I think a lot of people are getting significantly negatively affected by the spending in town. I have gone through line by line, and there's a lot of questions I have. I have gone through line by line, and there's a lot of questions I have. I will say that it would, I understand there's meetings, tons of meetings. We all have jobs. I thank you all for volunteering. But it feels like the voices of those people who are having difficulty in our town, particularly those that have been here a long time, are not being heard. And we're spending money on things that we shouldn't spend money on things, and when questioned, we're told it's a maintenance budget versus a pickleball court, new signs for the town, new logo for the town, all this other stuff. And you hear these people, not many in this room, there's 150 people here out of 10,000, right? But those voices are important, and we need to consider them, and we need to consider tightening our belts. End of line. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So just to remind everyone, the motion that we have in front of us is from Counselor Cromarty to approve Article 3 as written. That's 13, 13. Article 13 as written. So at this point, I would like for all, oh, I'm sorry. Here we go. Yes, please, go ahead.
Hi. Sorry. Todd Abbott, Siskiess Trail, parent in town, taxpayer and school employee and president of the teachers' union, and speaking tonight just as a, as a taxpayer. And I have something I wrote actually recently, just because I've been seeing the signs around town this year, which thankfully don't have my last name on them, which I appreciate whoever makes those signs. But I do want to say just a little bit of truth telling first. Despite the signs out, out in town, if you look at the actual numbers, the budget has gone up 32.7% over the last six budget cycles, not the last four budget cycles as those signs would have you believe. So before we can even get to why that happened, we're, we have to kind of agree that we're starting from a false narrative, a false premise. While the rule of approaching issues assuming positive intent would chalk this up to an accident, I have a hard time believing those opposed to the budget can't add and count at the same time. It would seem like these signs were intended to be misleading. If we use the same time period, 2019, 2024, and look at inflation, we're at 23.5% inflation. This means that the budget in that time only went up 9.2%. That's an average annual growth of just 1.5%. But if we wanted to be even a little bit more honest, to get the entire, you know, the new construction, all that in, because it's been a lot over the last 10 years or so, if we go back to 2015, the budget, the taxes since 2015 have only gone up 10.41% with the huge drops in '15, '16, and '17. So it seems like there's a reason that those signs say what they say and only go back as far as they did. If people are concerned, I personally would be more concerned with why people feel it's necessary to lie, to make us afraid, and make things seem like they're worse than to just tell us the truth and let us make decisions based on facts and objective, objective information.
Mr. Abbott, do you have a question for anyone on the dais?
My question would be, how is it that we, sorry, how are the numbers that are listed on the town website for annual increases calculated? And how could a four-year period have reached 33%? That would be my question is regarding those, that information out there.
I don't know that there will be anyone here who will be able to answer that question. Our purpose here now is to consider a motion on Article 13. And I believe that we have heard from a number of townspeople who have clear feelings about the town budget. But I'd like to make sure that we stay keeping our conversation relevant to the specific motion that's in front of us, which is whether or not we want to approve Article 13 as written. And I don't think I've heard any discussion from anyone that would leave us in a place where we couldn't have that vote now, where the town people can have their say by voting for Article 13. So if there's no further speakers, I think we should go for those in favor of the motion to approve Article 13 as written, to raise your hand. Thank you very much. And those opposed, please raise your hand. I got it. The ayes have it for Article 13, and it passes. Article 14, to see what sum the town will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. The recommend is $23,824,252. And to see what sum the town will raise as the town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act in accordance with the main revised statutes Title 20-A, Section 15688. The recommendation is $15,044,300. The town council and the school committee both recommend approval of Article 14. Counselor Craig, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. I move that the town vote to approve Article 14 as written.
Thank you very much, and we have a second. Great. Is there discussion from the floor for Article 14? Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise your hand? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your hand? Thank you. Article 14 passes. Article 15, to see what sum the town will raise and appropriate for the annual debt service payments on any non-state funded school construction projects, non-state funded portions of school construction projects and minor capital projects, in addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12. The recommendation is $2,467,722. Counselor Wolf, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. I move that the town vote to approve Article 15 as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Thank you very much. From the floor, is there any discussion? Would all those in favor please raise your hand? Thank you very much. All those opposed? Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Article 15 passes. Now we come to Article 16. A written ballot is required by law for action on this article. I'm going to read the article, and then we will have a written ballot. To see what sum the town will raise and appropriate in additional local funds, the recommendation is $15,576,112, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services funding model by $15,576,112, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee and the town council. The school committee recommends $15,576,112 for the additional local funds and gives the following reason for exceeding the state's essential programs and services model by $15,576,112 is needed to cover the town's share of the school budget that is the essential programs and, that the essential programs and services model does not recognize. The council, the town council and the school committee recommend approval of Article 16. Counselor Casey, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote by written ballot to approve Article 16 as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, thank you very much. Great. Now, to the people of Yarmouth, is there any discussion of this before we go to the written ballot? Seeing none, we will have the written ballot right up in front. The way it works is everyone will walk down to the front, you will fill out a piece of paper, and you will put it in the official box, and then the town clerk will tally the votes and present me with the results, and I shall announce them to the meeting. And in the meantime, the rest of you can talk and continue to celebrate our town. The town clerk has provided me with the tallies. I'd like to remind everyone that we are talking about Article 16. And the nos are 19 and the yeses are 109, so Article 16 is passed. Article 17, in the event that the Yarmouth School Department receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in the budget, shall the school committee be authorized to use some or all of that additional state subsidy to decrease the local cost share expectation as defined in Title 20-A, Section 15671-A, Subparagraph 1, Subparagraph B, for local property taxpayers for funding public education to increase expenditures in cost center categories and/or to increase the allocation of finances in the school department reserve fund as approved by the school committee. The town council and school committee recommend approval. Counselor Bates, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 17 as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
People of Yarmouth, do you have any discussion on Article 17? Seeing none, would all those in favor raise your hand? Thank you. Would all those opposed, raise your hand? Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Article 17 passes. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Yarmouth School Committee to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants or programs or other sources during the 2025-2026 fiscal year for school and/or adult education purposes, provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of funds not previously appropriated. The school committee estimates that $323,298 will be received and applied against the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. The town council and school committee recommend approval. Counselor Orenstein.
I move that the town vote to approve Article 18 as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. People of Yarmouth, is there any discussion of Article 18? Seeing none, would all those in favor raise your hand, please? All those opposed, raise your hand, please? Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Article 18 passes. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to accept the categories of funds listed below as provided by the main state legislature. I will be reading the category and the estimated amount. State revenue sharing, $2 million. Snowmobile reimbursements, $200. Department of Transportation block grant, $76,500. Veterans tax refund, $5,400. Court officers, 1,200. Welfare, $128,800. State aid to education, including federal pass-through funds, $8,836,488. Civil emergency preparedness funds, $1,000. Community development funds, $1,000. Main state housing authority grants, $1,000. Homestead exemption refunds, $563,823. The town council and school committee recommend approval. Counselor Abbott, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 19 as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion from the floor? Seeing none, would all those in favor raise your hand, please? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, raise your hand? Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Article 19 passes. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $7,418,616 of estimated transfers, fund balance, and revenues other than property taxes and school revenues to reduce the amount to be raised by property taxes or take any action relative thereto. The town council recommends approval. Senator, Senator, Counselor, not yet. Counselor Cromarty, do you have a motion?
Thank you, yes. I move that the town vote to approve Article 20 as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the floor? Seeing none, would everyone raise their eye if they're in favor? Thank you. If you're not in favor, would you raise your hand? Thank you. The ayes have it. Article 20 passes. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,579,426 for general government accounts or take any action relative thereto. The town council recommends approval. Counselor Craig, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 21 as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of Article 21 from the floor? Seeing none, would all those in favor raise their hand? Thank you. All those opposed, raise your hand? Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Article 2, 21 passes. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,317,302 for public safety accounts or take any action relative thereto. The town council recommends approval. Counselor Wolf, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 22 as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Good people of Yarmouth, is there any discussion? Seeing none, would all those in favor raise their hand? Thank you very much. All those opposed? Thank you very much. Article 22 passes. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,973,319 for public works accounts or take any action relative thereto. The town council recommends approval. Counselor Casey, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the town vote to approve Article 23 as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the town people? I see none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your hand. The ayes have it. Article 23 passes. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $110,428 for health and welfare or take any action relative thereto. The town council recommends approval. Counselor Bates, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 24 as written.
Thank you very much, and I hear a second. Is there any discussion from the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. All those opposed? Thank you very much. And Article 24 passes. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,375,845 for public services or take any action relative thereto. The town council again recommends approval. Counselor Orenstein.
I move that the town vote to approve Article 25 as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from our community? Seeing none, would all those in favor raise their hand? Thank you very much. All those opposed? Seeing none. Article 25 passes. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,571,344 for debt service or take any action relative thereto. The town council recommends approval. Counselor Abbott, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 26 as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the floor? Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise your hand? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hand? There you go. Article 26 passes. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,869,462 for capital reserve accounts or to take any action relative thereto. The town council recommends approval. Counselor Cromarty, do you have a recommendation?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 27 as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Discussion from the floor? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Article 27 passes. Article 28, to choose all the...
Those two questions are going to be covered.
Oh, they're going to be, oh, so they are going to be covered. Okay, right. Okay, so then, all right, here we go. Great. So what's going to happen at this point is following this, this is following, okay, that's, okay, that's, yeah. Okay, so following Article 27, the town council is recommending that we adjourn the annual meeting to be continued on June 10th, 2025, for voting by secret ballot on Articles 28 and 29. The polls will be open at Yarmouth High School Gymnasium off of West Elm Street in Yarmouth from 6:00 AM until 8:00 PM. So that we have approved all of the articles that we're going to approve in this portion of the town meeting. The town meeting is going to be adjourned, not ended, adjourned, until June 10th, when all people, all voters of Yarmouth will be able to vote on Articles 28 and 29. If there's no other discussion, I am going to call this town meeting to conclusion, and thank you all for being here tonight, and I look forward to seeing you on June 10th.